For the meeting of the regular meeting of the Board of Education District 208, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Jericho?
Yes.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have any visitor's statements for this evening?
Yes.
Sir, please come on up to the table. I'm going to read a short statement before you get started.
Okay.
The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor comments are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. So if you introduce yourself and get started.
Hi, thank you. My name is David Hilk, and I have a son who graduated in 2020, Vaughn. A son who graduated in 2000, no, I'm sorry, he graduated in 2018. Son Jackson graduated in 2020. And my daughter Remy graduated in 2022, and she was valedictorian of the class. I guess we still want to use those terms. So the reason why I'm here is because I have been a delinquent parent as far as keeping up what's going on. I've reviewed the landmarks, I've talked to kids, and I just wanted to just express myself to you because I have some concern with the fact that you're going to, you're going through a process of removing class rank, and also this transition with how you're going to handle the number one student, number two student, and the top 10 students of the class versus other time periods. Basically, I'll start with what's going on right now with the kids. That my daughter was, has a concern that, that instead of the valedictorian speaking to the class, that it be a person who's voted by the top 10%. I've interviewed all three of my kids and other kids about how does that work? Who's talking about this? Because I really do think that whoever is number one in the class shouldn't be a popularity contest. It shouldn't be school president. It shouldn't be homecoming king or queen. It should be the number one kid. And I really do think that that's something that if a kid is bashful, shy, doesn't, not good at public speaking, that this is their opportunity to express themselves as the number one kid. They deserved it, they earned it. If a child, for example, two years ago, we had a number one student going to Harvard, and he was number one in the class, he chose not to speak. And what I would ask, looking back on that, reflecting on the past, was if he didn't want to speak because he was nervous, okay. But you would want to say to him, this would be really good for your resume, this would be good for anything you do postgraduate or for employment, to say you're valedictorian of the class and you spoke to the class. And, and also as, if he's going to be a leader, if he's going to be the top person in his class to go forth, and I think I understand he went to Harvard, that, that this is an opportunity for him to develop his speaking skills because someone with that type of intellect, that intelligence, that ranking should be able to express himself better. And if he was a nervous kid, then I'd say get an English teacher or a speech coach to work with him. Number two, with my daughter and the top 10 kids in the class, my understanding was is that the top 10 kids were no longer put on the stage. They used to be on the stage with the, with the school board members, and now they're in the front row. This most recent year, they were, they were supposed to get their diplomas in alphabetical order. And the, the top 10 kids organized themselves by class rank. The all 10 of them disgusted, and they rearranged themselves so they were in order of rank. And they felt the kid who was number 10 was just as thrilled, the kid who was number one, my daughter, just as thrilled. They all felt that was more appropriate to go in order of it. So just like with, with, you know, Little League and, and junior soccer, we don't keep score, but when the kids come home, they say, yeah, we won five for one. But officially, you're not supposed to keep score. The kids keep score. From my daughter, she did not want to appear, but she did want to give you a quote. And she had talked to all 10, all nine other students that were the top 10 in the class, and they said that if class rank was, was not there, that, that they said that they would not have tried as hard to motivate themselves from year to year. And I really do believe that if you were to take the synopsis of how you want to move to these generalities of using the Latin system for acknowledging kids, that it's almost like saying, okay, the fastest runner in the state, well, the top three will be the fastest, the top five will be the fastest. The kids thrive on achieving and working toward goals. And I know that there were some quotes in the landmark from previous years leading up to this, where you're going to start doing this, where students would, it was like, oh, it's stressful. There's cheating that can happen, and we want to do equity. And I'd still love to have a board member explain to me what equity means. I think, Ms. Towner, you had referred to that in the landmark, maybe you were misquoted. But the kids all want to strive to be the very best they can be.
How many seconds?
Oh, really? Okay, thank, how many seconds?
30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay. So with that, I want to go to class rank and just tell you that as of 2018, the National Association of College Admission Counseling, that they were surveyed, and they said that when it comes to class rank, when making a determination for being in a school, that 13.8% of the college admissions people said that it's not important about class rank. 28.3% said that there was limited importance to class rank. 43.8% said a class rank was important in determinationing who gets into their school, and 14.1% said it was extremely important. If you take the important and the extremely important as of 2018, that's 57.9% of college admissions people thinking that class rank is important. And I would tell you that in spite of the fact that there's this lead that's happening across the board at, at high schools, I will tell you that this, this is going to, this is going to come back where you're going to wish you had class rank again. Just like the top universities have now figured out, ah, we do need to have standardized testing as part of our process for deciding who comes into our schools. And now MIT and another, a lot of top schools are now refocusing on standardized testing when a lot of schools or students would just not concern themselves with even taking the SAT or the ACT, which I think is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Hilk.
And by the way,
Thank you for your comments.
Officially, my class rank at Lyons Township Class 82 was probably less than 50%. So I'm not talking about someone who's, you know, achieving here, but I want to thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And I really would ask you to reconsider what you're going to be doing in the fall for these incoming freshmen. Freshmen, all kids love to be challenged.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Is anyone else here this evening? I'm not seeing any. We'll move on to discussion information items. We had some FOIA requests.
No FOIA requests for this one.
Any additional discussion items from Board of Ed members requesting to discuss at some point in the agenda? Looking to my left, looking to my right. Moving on to reports, there's no president's report, move on to the superintendent's report, please.
Short superintendent's report for this month. Residency verification begins tomorrow for the 22, 23 school year, so that starts tomorrow. It's hard to believe we're already talking about next school year. Teachers' report Thursday, August 11th, and the first day of student attendance is August 15th. The district and high school are on summer hour 7:30 to 3:30 until August 11th. No significant updates from Advisory Council's facilities. Advisory Council, Dr. Smetana will provide an update tonight on that life safety amendment that we discussed at the June board meeting. Finance Advisory Council, the tentative budget has been updated with the June 30th actuals. No new updates from personnel policy. We did receive a small press plus addition. And what that is, is every, every time we finish a collective bargaining session and there's a new contract, we send it to them, and they update any policies that refer to the collective bargaining agreement. So I will review that, I'll send suggestions to my policy advisory group, and we should have recommendations for the August board meeting. And there's no updates on purchase, sale, or lease of land at the advisory council. So that's my superintendent report for July 12.
Thank you, Dr. Skink. Is any questions from anyone looking? Moving on to Dr. Smetana.
Good evening. Tonight I'll provide the Board of Education with reports through the month of June, which represents 100% of our fiscal year. I'll start on Board Book Page 7, which is our monthly summary report. The total operating revenue for the month was $1,284,614, with 36% coming from federal and state grant reimbursements, 23% from property taxes, and 22% from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. The total operating expenditures for the month were $3,38,824, with 52% towards salary and benefits, 15% for special education tuition, and 19% for purchase services, primarily food service for RB and our satellite schools, as well as LADZI, our special ed cooperative. We receive a final reconciliation bill at the end of the year and the township treasure. Monthly financial statements begin on the next page. I rearranged them a little bit this month to start off with a summary of revenue, which shows that the district has received 107% of our budgeted revenue for this year. This percentage, the extra 7%, equates to an additional $2,011,785 in revenue above what we had budgeted for. This percent is lower than this time last year, which was 108.9%. The summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 97.36% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, which is pretty similar to this time last year. So if you remember last year's budget, we were anticipating a surplus of around $694,000. So when you have a lot more revenue come in and you don't spend as much, you're going to have a bigger surplus. So we did end with a surplus of $3,444,870 in our operating fund. I tried to outline briefly the main reasons for the additional surplus. If you look at the first two items, CPRT and property tax, those two items alone are almost roughly a million dollars in additional revenue above and beyond what we had budgeted for. And then if you look at the last line of additional revenue, we had received $367,000 in additional revenue in special education reimbursements. And then under budgeted expenditures was special education, around $467,000. So that also almost equates to about a million dollars. So the $2 million swing alone can be accounted for through property tax and CPRT as well as special education.
And those are things that we had, you know, no control, correct? I want to make sure.
Correct.
I mean, like, our special tuition is always reimbursed a year later.
Yes, we did save some money on special education tuition, but we had some students move out. And sometimes we have-
Didn't come back from COVID, correct?
Exactly. And this surplus will be needed to offset the delay in the fall property tax collection, which the district typically receives in August. Cook County, as we've talked about, is switching over to a new integrated property tax system. And so it could be that we don't receive those payments until January, and we'll have a debt service payment that we need to pay. So the surplus will be helpful. And then, as always, I've included the statement of revenue and expenditures for the board as well as the student activity accounts. Lastly, in my presentation, I'd like to ask the board if I could move up the life safety item to at least briefly discuss it before asking Liz Hennessy to come up, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, I think, do we have leave to do that? Is everyone comfortable? Yes, thank you.
So Mary Ann, if you could go to Board Book Page 642, please.
Short package.
Just Page 642.
So the life safety amendment that I'm asking for the board to approve tonight is in regards to the library and cafeteria units. Those are two largest air handling units in the building outside of our pool unit. We've had issues with them for the past 10 years, and they're on their last leg. These are two units that were not touched during the renovation. So we've been trying to piece together repairs over the past 10 years. We will be lucky if we can make it through the year without them breaking down. The dampers and fans no longer function properly, and it's leaking refrigerant cooling as well. And so, like I said, we are trying to piece it together, but we need to address this this year. Especially with COVID, these are two largest spaces where we have students in the building. And so if these break and we aren't able to circulate air in these areas, we'll have a significant issue. There was a question submitted about asking if the replacement of the air handlers would have an impact on any of the new roofs that have been installed over the past few years. It will impact the new roofs only because we'll be removing the larger units and replacing them with smaller units. And so once we replace them with smaller units, there'll be some areas in which we'll need to add some existing roofing to those areas and do some tuck work as well. But that's all included in-
Okay. So that cost is included?
Right. We just want to make, can we make sure, make note, which I know we discussed, is that it's all noted and it doesn't impact any warranties?
Correct. And so the first step in this process-
Can I interrupt you quickly? So could you just go through, they were 10 years ago, they are 10 years old, so at the time of the last life safety amendment, they were not near their useful life. I just wanted to emphasize that.
They're more than 10 years old.
Okay, so how old are they?
We've had issues with them for the past 10 years.
We've had issues with them for 10 years. So why were they not included in the prior life safety amendment?
Do not know. I would have to ask our architect. But the first step in the process is to just approve the life safety amendment tonight so that we can then submit it to the state for approval, because that process can take anywhere from three to six months. And so that's the only thing that we will be asking the board for approval tonight. And should the state approve it, we wanted to be able to start the conversation early about how we would fund the project. The best way to fund the project would be to issue life safety bonds, which is why we've invited Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James tonight to talk about this option. And she presented, or she gave you all a handout in front of you. It's also included in Board Book. So I'd ask Liz to come up at this time. And if you want to look at it electronically, that would be Board Book Page 27.
So, so the board, why would Liz get comfortable? So the board understands, we send this off, Kerry's going to send, Kerry from DLA, our architect, will send this off to the state. Should the state come back and say this doesn't qualify, or they're only qualifying a portion of it, we will have to use some of our surplus funds to pay for these repairs. This is a repair that's going to need to occur.
Who at the state certifies this? What's, what's the?
They have, they have an architect that works for the ISBE that reached through all your life safety submittals and determines if it's a true life safety repair or a capital needs repair. If it's deemed life safety, you can use life safety bonds, which are non-referendum bonds. If they deem it as not, then-
It's capital.
It's capital. And then you would have to either do referendum bonds or working cash bonds, or pay out of your surplus. Good evening, Liz, how are you today?
I'm well, thank you for having me tonight.
So Liz Hennessy is from Raymond James. She serves as our underwriter. She's done multiple bond issues for the district. She's helped us improve our bond rating with Standard and Poor's, is that correct?
Correct.
Or AA+, which is the highest a school can be, which has improved over the last 10 years due to the financial work the board has done to get their finances in order. And so we've asked Liz to present the board with what's the most reasonable bond issuance should we get approval and need life safety bonds to have the least impact on the taxpayers? And so that's what Liz is going to present to you tonight, just so you have some idea what this would look like.
Thank you, thanks, Kevin. So if we go to the page four of the presentation, we'll just start a little market recap. Interest rates have been extremely volatile. Last time the district brought bonds to market, we were at or near all-time lows in 2016 and 17. Interest rates really spiked when we realized we're going into the pandemic in March of 2020. The Federal Reserve stepped in and stabilized the market by bringing the Fed funds rate down to zero. Municipal and US Treasury market followed suit, and we had an all-time low interest rate in August of 2021. Since then, since January, we've really seen inflation increase, as you all know. So the Fed has been increasing interest rates and is expected to continue to do so until we get an indication that inflation is calming down. So that's why we have that really steep spike. The lines, the yellow is a 30-year. The red is the 10-year municipal market data AAA index. The purple is the one-year, and the blue line is the 10-year US Treasury bond. So they all kind of move together.
And from the school perspective, which one is, should we be following?
The red line.
The red line.
Or given the bonds that we're looking at are so short, really between the purple and the red line. Because what we're going to look at for life safety is just a quick two-year payoff.
Two or three, two, two years?
Two years. At the current $2,340,000. So just going to page six, just to quickly review your debt limit, you have plenty of debt margin, according to the state formula, just under $42 million. And page seven reviews your bond rating history. As Dr. Skink has mentioned, you're, we're upgraded in 2015 to AA+, which is just one notch below the very highest rating. So that's really a testament to the great financial management the district's done over the last 10 years. Page eight reviews the different bond issues you have outstanding. And if we look at the first one, in 2017, the district issued some life safety bonds as well. And, you know, these bonds are able to be issued without referendum. They're paid under what's called the debt service extension base. And these bonds are very short in term, specifically for the reason that we know you would have more life safety projects coming down the pike in three to five years. So the board made sure at that point to give future boards flexibility to issue bonds if and when needed. The 17B bonds are taxable working cash issue. The 2017C is a refunding of the referendum-approved bonds that were issued in 2007. If we go to the next page.
So Liz, just so the board understands, before we flip pages, on the bottom of the 2017A, those are life safety bonds, they're, they're coming off the books in December 15th of '24.
Correct.
We have $3 million coming off the books in December 15th of 2022, correct? And that's 2017B?
But there's one more bond for life safety that's included in it on the next page.
Okay, and that's the 215A?
Yes.
Okay. So really, we have in December almost $9 million coming off the books?
Yes. And don't we have another one coming off in '23?
'25 you have coming off the books was the $13 million refinanced in 2015.
Right. Right, and that was also part of the referendum bonds. So those bonds were refunded for savings in 2015 and 2016. And then, as we mentioned, the 2015A and the 2017A were life safety bonds. So this kind of just shows the individual issues. Let's go forward and we'll see the existing debt service, and you'll see what Kevin was talking about, about the bonds falling off. Page 10 just reiterates what Christian was saying about the life safety amendments, the projects, and the total estimated cost of $2,340,000 for your life safety amendments. And just to the process, these amendments, once approved by the board, go to the Cook County Regional Office. They approve them, then they go to the State Board of Education's Life Safety Department. They approve them, then it goes back to Cook County Regional, and they submit an order back to the district to submit compliance, meaning you have to comply.
So what's the general timeframe with that?
You know, they say the state-
You say validity, I would think you want to do this to understand when you're going to get an ideal rate.
Yes, we want to, my advice to the district is to get out in the market as quickly as possible. Because we don't see inflation turning around. We've got a CPI release tomorrow for last month. So we really want to move as quickly as possible. We're just constrained by the state. So you'll see when we get to the timeline, I put a timeline that gets in the ready position as soon as the state gives the okay. So I agree, we need to get in the market soon.
So that would, that would be after we get all the approvals, you would have us in a place to shortly thereafter execute the purchase of the bonds to pay for the work that needs to be done to be in compliance?
Correct, correct.
So we're hoping that October to January is the time that we'd be having the bonds?
Right.
The goal is to try to, to try to hopefully get approval and go out to the market before the first of year?
There actually is a helpful timeline on page 16.
Yes.
I just, I apologize, I jumped ahead of your presentation.
No problem.
So on page 11 of the presentation from Liz, that's, that's what you're, that's our outstanding debt service tax rate?
Yes. So this page 11 has the various columns that are needed to calculate your tax rate. We start on the right, the left, with the tax year. 2021, we're waiting to see what the EAV will be. As Christian mentioned, we're not going to find that out till the fall sometime. Taxes are going to be late. Then we've got this debt service extension base. For 2022, that amount is $2,032,000, and that reflects the 5% CPI we're going to have for the year 2022. Moving to the right, and under column C, we have the current non-referendum debt service. This is a combination of those two life safety bonds and that one working cash bond. So you see last year in 2021, levy year, the payment was $1,758,700. This year, it's dropping down to $757,000, and about the same the next year. So that drop gives the district the opportunity to issue these new bonds with very little impact on the tax rate, which we'll see in another page or two. Column D shows the referendum debt service, still outstanding, those two issues that were refunded, very stable, right around $4 million. And then those two columns together, C plus D equals your total debt service payments. And then those, those are in fact the levies for debt. And then the tax rate, you can see is 60 cents in '21 is the estimation of it. We don't know the final EAV yet. And it's going to drop down by 11 cents to 49 cents, if you do nothing. And that's not a bad thing, except when you have life safety to take care of. The other philosophy that, you know, we've talked about going back to '16 and '17 is that it's not great for the taxpayers to have taxes drop off 11 cents and then the next year, when the next life safety project comes in, to go back up. You know, to kind of put them on the roller coaster. It's nice when the tax rate can stay stable and your payments can stay stable. So by issuing this life safety bonds now, we'll be able to stabilize that tax rate. So we don't have a dip and then a subsequent increase.
So I have a question on that. So the 2017Cs, those go till 12/15 of '27, correct? Are they not reflected on the summary sheet?
I think she combined them.
Did you?
The 2015-
2017.
2017C bonds are in column D. Those are the referendum bonds. Now, what you're seeing on page 11 is tax year or levy year.
Thank you.
So 2026 tax year pays bonds due the following year in '27, yes.
So on page 12 is the proposed, how we would fund this repair, correct?
It is. So if you see in the middle of the page where it says $2,340,000, proposed TE, that's for tax exempt debt service extension-based bonds, they're paid off in two years. You might notice the interest rate we've used is really high. We put a 1% cushion in there. So that 4.65% today would be 3.65%. Short-term rates have gone up a ton, as you know. We've had the Fed raising rates 75 basis points a crack. So the good news is, though, these are paid off in two years. So that really minimizes your interest costs, because interest cost is a factor of the amount you borrow, the time you have it out, as well as the interest rate. And so if we look at, you know, adding this $2,340,000 and paying it off in two years, that increases the tax rate by 3 cents, which is $30 for a $350,000 home. So quite a small impact. The other thing to note is that in 2024, that debt service extension base is totally open again. So if you have another project in the next two years, you've got capacity to address it.
And when we pay these off in '24, the tax rate drops to 41 cents?
Yep. So if we look at the graph on page 13, this is the current situation. The dark blue bars are the debt payments for the referendum debt service. The green is the current life safety. The green is the current life safety. You see the big drop from twenty-one to twenty-two. That's current. Go to page fourteen. We see the blue, bright blue bars filling in the proposed two million, three hundred and forty thousand life safety bonds.
And that's if the interest rate was four point six five. So actually, if it comes in lower than that, it should be flat to the green bar. Is that an easier way to say it, or?
Flat, you know, it, yeah, it's going to mean there's going to be more room-
Correct.
-to do more debt, lower interest costs, for sure.
So when would we anticipate the amendment twenty-four, then?
So let's go to the schedule now. Tonight, we're reviewing the life safety needs, and the board is going to look at approving the life safety amendments. As soon as they're approved, they go off to Cook County Regional Office and State Board for approval. We do need to have a public hearing when issuing life safety bonds. So I've suggested on the schedule that we publish that notice on September twenty-eighth for a public hearing at your meeting on October seventh. And the reason I'm saying October seventh, if we say these life safety things are going to come back in three months, you know, July, August, September, October, earliest it could be is October. Could be longer. But at least we'll have the public hearing out of the way, and then we could move to issue the bonds at your regular meeting on November fifteenth. So I'm saying we need to get these life safety amendments back before November fifteenth in order to issue the bonds on that date.
So I guess my question, this is life safety number twenty-three, assuming there'll be a life safety number twenty-four. I think in my mind, that was on a 2024 schedule. Would that then be authorized under this issuance?
No.
So it would be a separate issuance?
Anytime you're going to submit, any type of life safety work for life safety bonds has to get pre-approved by the state.
So what's the timing on amendment twenty-four?
We won't know, I mean, we're not going to, in 2023, the architect will come and verify that all of our work's been completed from the 2013 because it happens every ten years. And then in 2023, the summer before 2023, they'll start walking the building and see if anything else. With the amount of work we did on roofs, I would think that we would have less repairs to do in this upcoming life safety walk, the ten-year study, unless we're going to have, we may have some sections of the roofs that were completed in the 2008, nine renovation that will start being close to being off warranty. But I think, I would imagine that we should be at a, I mean, never say never, but we should be at a lower amount of work that needs to be done in this next ten-year study because we did so much in this last ten-year study.
No, and that makes sense. I'm just looking at it from the debt service impact, right? If this is allowing for a certain amount of continuity, at what point is that impact going to either increase, or is it picking up when these two years are expired? Does it-
I think it would be flushing around somewhere around twenty-four, twenty-five, when we're at four, three, four, thirty-seven.
Okay.
So there is some time in there to keep it closer, if we need to do the work to keep that roller coaster steady closer to six or closer to five. The goal would be at some point to try to give some break to the taxpayer, right? I mean, but-
Well, and that's going to happen naturally when those referendum bonds are paid off.
Right, because there's such a lot of-
And that happens in twenty-three, twenty-four.
And the next round of life safety that she's inquiring about, do we have to borrow all that money upfront?
No.
No.
You would borrow it every time you do a life safety amendment.
Yeah, so-
That's why you see on-
You can, you can get through these too, and then have a new cycle of what we need to do.
Over the ten-year period.
And you have to do it within the ten-year period, but we can wait a year or two to issue.
Correct.
And then a year or two after that, the referendum is falling off.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Correct.
That addresses my concern.
You have to see it on a timeline and-
Yeah. Well, I was trying to put it in, on this scale here, I was trying to understand where it fell, but that was helpful.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Hennessy?
Can we do it on the same day, October eleventh? Can we have two separate meetings?
No.
Why would we have to come in on Friday and then come back on Tuesday?
After the public hearing, we have to wait seven days. That's the way the statute says.
Okay.
Now, we can move the public hearing to September.
Well, you have the October seventh public hearing and then the board meeting on the eleventh, and you said we-
I meant, I think I meant to say-
She misspoke.
I misspoke. I apologize, Mike. I meant hold the public hearing on the board meeting on the seventh. Publish no later than the October, September twenty-eighth, so-
So that there's, it's in the newspaper for a minimum of ten days.
Okay, so we're publishing it on Friday, and we're having a meeting.
Correct. We never come in for a separate, correct?
Both meetings at the same time on Tuesday.
Just like we do with the budget.
I misheard, or?
Yeah, I apologize. I misspoke.
Well, it'd be nice if we could somehow do this with the budget hearing as well.
Budget hearing is the second week of September. That's going to be tough to get that turnaround from the state. If we did, we could.
Well, and we can do the hearing before we get the money, the amendment back from the state. The hearing is a requirement that just gets us in the ready position. So we would have the hearing for the two million, three forty, the amount of the amendment. If the state approved less, we'd have to issue less bonds. We couldn't issue all, we can only issue bonds if the state approves. But we can have the public hearing for any amount. So if it works better for you to have the budget hearing and the public hearing on life safety bonds, we could move that to September.
We'd have a better idea in sixty days.
Yeah.
We'd be in better position sixty days to make that decision.
Something to think about.
Any questions from the board, though? You know, we're trying to do this in minimal to no impact on the taxpayers. We're trying to pay them off as fast as possible, sync them up with our other debt service payments. Everybody's okay should we get approval for this. If we got to, let's just play this out, you know, verbally. If we get approval, we do the hearing, we take out the bonds. The goal is to get the approval for the bonds before the first of the year. And then as soon as we return from winter break, you try to get out early for bids so that you get the best pricing possible, and so that this work can be completed as soon as, you know, the last day of school, and so that the, both units in the air conditioning are ready to run by August of twenty-three.
So tonight, we're taking action to acknowledge there's a need to make this change. We have a, we have an equipment need.
Yes. Tonight, we need you just to approve the amendment so we could send it off to the state and to the regional office of education to start that process of their approval. It's not committing us to any bonds or any financing or any project at this point.
Do you have a question? If the state does not approve, then it comes out from our-
We have two options. We pay it from our surplus, or we pay it, or we would go out for working cash bonds. Working cash bonds, legal, but they can be, you know, you have to post them for sixty days. The community can petition against those working cash bonds. At that point, I would say we would need to sit down with Liz. I would say we would sit down with our auditor, Kristen, because I would say we have the three million dollars that the board approved in those working cash bonds for the field project. And I think there was a caveat that unless there was a significant capital improvement that needed to occur. So we were trying not to touch that money so that if we could expand our footprint, like with our board goal. But if for some reason we didn't, and the board didn't want to take out working cash bonds, we could use a portion of that three million to pay this. Now, that being said, then that would work against what we're trying to do with expanding the footprint because then at some point, we would have to look at going out to reborrow. The important thing is, is right, we're paying these off in a short-term, it's a short-term cycle, so the interest payments are still pretty low. And we're doing it in over two years, and then we can still have that three million aside. The goal, the ultimate goal, is to get to a point to where we work off, we give the taxpayers the break from working off all that debt from the 2007 referendum, and just have these little minimal life safety projects out there that we're funding at little to no impact on the taxpayers. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
And so right now, we're going to have a whole school year of potential-
And that's my concern.
Correct.
Do we have to go, can we just decide we're just going to pay it off now with surplus funds to avoid potential, it's going to be a whole year of, let's-
Duck tape and cork.
Let's pray to God nothing happens because now we're paying for repairs and we're-
That would be great if we had a contractor or under contract who was willing to come in Monday morning and start this, and we don't have that.
We also, we also aren't going to get our tax revenue for six months.
That's me. We need to be able to cover that as well.
So like that three million in the surplus we just have-
I was going to say, we just had three million extra.
Right, but what's-
To me, it just makes like, let's just get it started now.
What's going to happen with that three million is that's going to be used to pay all our bills until we get our money in January or February. So we really don't have that in hand just yet.
Well, no, I know, but we've also talked about how we have the fund balance and how that's going to work for us when we don't get tax money. So, and this three million was this, and I'm just, I'm just saying, rather than wait the whole year, let's go out to bid now because we realize that we need it, and it's been giving us problems for a very long time, ten years, right? So why wait an additional year?
But we first have to get it approved, that it's life safety. They could say it's capital. So we first have to find out.
No, I think she's suggesting we just make the payment tomorrow.
My biggest concern is we will have to be able to make our debt service payment in December.
Right.
And we will need, we will need all of the surplus to make that happen and operate-
And I understand this country, I, we operate on credit, and I get, I get that. But I also know that we've got, I, it was just a question, just to clarify it for me.
One thought process.
I think we would have a supply chain issue and an installation issue.
And because we've got all kinds of issues, I can just, all I hear is, we got to do this, and then we're going to wait, and then maybe in January, and then when I heard you say maybe by August of twenty, what up, twenty twenty-three, we'll get it. And then in my mind, I'm like, wait, it's ten years. You just, Dr. Spintana just said that it's been giving us a gazillion issues. So I'm just, I'm just talking it through out loud, I guess.
So I would suggest, I would suggest, I think the life safety bond is the path to pursue, and if there is a roadblock in that from the state, or if interest rates so become so onerous that a two-year issuance doesn't make any sense-
Then we would use it.
Then maybe we need to revisit here as a discussion.
Okay.
If you spend the money out of working cash, you can't replenish the money to working cash out of operating funds.
I understand that. It was just, I was-
That's a good question.
And if you spend the money out of operating funds, you don't longer have that cushion in operating funds to pay operating expenses. I understand too.
So here's my thing, if I was on the other side of the table, that's the question I would have. So I'm just putting it out there so that everyone at home listening can understand that this is why. Because that's, right, on the other, that was my question.
So the one thing we have to be, we have to think about is, we got to get through, students aren't back August fifteenth. August, September, maybe first two weeks of October, these units are running. Then they're down from October, November, December, January, February, March.
Right.
Because of winter, right? We probably don't kick that air back until maybe April. And so then we got another two months, then kids can eat lunch. So like, because I don't think we're going to be able to order these large units, get them, like, it's not something that can happen over a weekend. You're talking about having it craned on, probably not safe to have kids in the calf butter, putting it, you know what I mean?
Well, no, I was just talking about, geez Louise, that's such a huge, like, that's such a long time, but now we're at the mercy of the state, basically, right? And that's what I hate, like, why?
But even that's helpful, the fact that they're really only used-
Right.
-half of the year.
They won't be answered. I get that.
It's most advantageous for us as a board, in my opinion, to go through the life safety process, which we're doing, which, you know, it's a ten-year cycle, so we're amending the current life safety piece of paper that's been approved from the state asking for further approval. And personally, when you tell them that these are units to circulate air for students, and our two largest places in the building are our library and our cafeteria, I don't see them not approving that.
Not approving. I get that.
Correct.
I hope you are.
An air handling unit is operating not more than just air conditioning.
Correct. But as much as some of the problems we're having with the freon, the dampers, and some of those-
The stressful time is when there's air conditioning on the unit.
Correct. So we could limp through, right? It's not, not working max, max capacity year-round.
So I think what I'm hearing is we should take action on the life safety amendment tonight.
Correct.
I would ask Ms. Towner to call that if you could.
I'm ready.
That's under new business, so we can, we don't need to do that right now unless the board would like to.
Well, we took leaves to get out of order. I think it would make sense just to have it handled.
Ready?
Yes.
Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves life safety amendment twenty-three as presented and discussed in the July twelfth, 2022 board agenda packet.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Welch. Can we hit a roll call, please?
Mr. Gurkha?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benford?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Yes. So then, as it relates to Raymond James, our next step is to initiate this process and perhaps require for you to come back.
Right. So we'll be in touch, Liz.
Good.
Thank you very much for tonight.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
That was a big interruption before we got to Dr. Freitas's principal's report. Without further ado.
Good evening, our board members. Under teaching and learning, summer school session two is underway, and it runs through the end of the month, and I'm proud that we continue to offer opportunities to be back on track, make up credits, and thank you to all the staff members that have taken the time during the summer to work with us. AP scores are currently being released. Some are released at the beginning of July, some a little later, as we have students that kind of could have taken a test late, so those get released a little later. Congratulations again to all the class of twenty-two summer graduates. Residency begins tomorrow. I don't know if you guys had your appointments, but tomorrow we begin the thirteenth from eight to three, July twentieth, eleventh to seven, the twenty-seventh, eleventh to seven, and August second from eight to two. I'll be present there. I'm striving to greet and welcome all of our students and parents. I do have a few meetings, so if I'm missing, I'm here. But I will definitely strive to be there to welcome all of our families. Freshman orientation will be held on August tenth at the Canelli Athletic Complex, AKA the stadium, on August tenth from eleven to twelve-thirty. And that same evening, we have welcome night for all students and families. Students get to walk the building, kind of walk their schedule, you know, sit down for Q and A with administration as well. School begins sharply on Monday, August fifteenth at eight AM, and then open house will be at the end of August, Wednesday, August twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM. Under activities and athletics, summer school camps continue, and on August eighth, all fall sports eligible to begin trials and practice. More information to come as we get closer to the beginning of the fall athletic season. We'll make sure we communicate all the opportunities to the residents and families of Resett Brookfield. And that concludes my principal's report. Mr. Welch?
Yes, I missed, I missed hearing the, you said something about they're able to walk through at night?
Yes, yes. So they'll, they'll be here, they'll be able to kind of walk, they'll be able to walk the building.
What date would that be?
That is on August tenth from four to six. I've already sent communication, and I'm, and I will communicate again as well.
And do we have parking for all our incoming people on these days, on those days, or is the zoo?
I think you got to look at that.
Yeah, yeah. We always work with the zoo to open up, and so we always strive our best to have as much parking available.
That's why Mr. Main is pounding his sixteen-ounce coffee at the brewery right now. He's trying to figure out how he's going to park.
Yeah, but we always try, we always communicate, we let them know ahead of time, and we definitely strive to make it possible for our parents to have parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Welch.
Any other questions on the principal's report? Anyone? Consent agenda. I don't think we had any comments or questions on that, Ms. Towner?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on June fourteenth, 2022, open and close as presented in the July twelfth, 2022 board agenda packet.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Moving on. Under old business, I don't believe we have anything under life safety. Can we move on to the tentative budget?
Correct. Kristen, just provide a brief update.
Sure. On Friday, I was able to update the June thirtieth actuals. I was not able to do any additional analysis or adjustments due to the timing of when the township treasurer closed us out and when the board packet was due. So I will be going over the budget with a fine-tooth comb for the next month and you'll be seeing a much closer final version in August. And I'll highlight the changes at that time as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the educational tour music department.
This board wanted the board requested a second read just to make sure Dr. Freitas got a few more details. I believe that memo has been updated. There were no questions submitted. Dr. Freitas, do you have anything you need to share?
I do. I know one of the concerns of the board was fundraising opportunities. So we're working with the RB music sponsors and there will be at least three fundraisers where students will have the opportunity to raise the entire amount they need for the trips. So I'm really proud that I'm working with other music teachers and the music sponsors. Students will have that opportunity. And then the trip, and then there's always, every year, there's always a few students that actually do make it. And also, the trip has four levels of cost for students starting at eighteen hundred dollars. And this comes from our lead sponsor. You know, you save a lot of occupancy, right? So a lot of students kind of have a quad occupancy in the hotel and that allows them to save some money as well. So we'll be working with our music sponsors to make sure students have ample opportunity to fundraise the amount they need and, and to make it as manageable as possible.
Great.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the out-of-state educational tour request for the music department students to go to Walt Disney World Orlando, Florida from January thirteenth to January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three as presented in the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two board agenda packet.
Second.
Any discussion?
You know, I'll just say, I do miss the sponsors coming in telling us about the project or about the trip. And I, you know, I'm gonna approve it, but I just don't feel that this trip is as robust or has some of the educational opportunities the other trips have had. I know, it's just a personal comment. You know, I think of the one in New York. They saw historical sites. They were given a tour of Manhattan. They had opportunities that they wouldn't get. Maybe they're gonna get that on this trip, but the sponsors and the faculty sponsors weren't here to sell us the trip. In the past, they were here, they were excited and they told us why they believed that this was a good fit for their class. So I miss that. I hope next year, when they have a trip, they come and sell us on it, why it's a great fit for their students.
And if I can add, the sponsor unfortunately had a personal conflict, so he couldn't be here today, but he would have been more than happy to have been here.
Any more comments? We can move forward with a roll call.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor? Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkhan?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is the athletic trainer PT contract.
This allows us to outsource an agreement with ATI in order to have a full-time athletic trainer. We've had some issues filling the assistant role and Mr. Fry has covered that. Now, Mr. Fry has put in that he would be willing to help out with the assistant trainer position. There was a question submitted on that, just sometimes with events going on inside and outside in some of our spring events and even at times our fall events being at two places. So we were willing to have the assistant athletic trainer be available to cover times when the full-time athletic trainer could not cover. Correct?
Yes, this will also help with the transition so that Bill can assist the new trainer with our concussion protocols, our impact testing and all of the things that we already have in place. Additionally, based on the timing of this, ATI would not post our position until both of our legal counsels agreed on the terms of the contract, which happened last week. So there is a possibility we might not be starting the fall season with two trainers. They might not have someone ready to go by August eighth.
Yeah, thank you. That, that addresses my.
Krista, a requirement from the Illinois High School Athletic Association on number of trainers per student?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Will we have the necessary coverage?
We will have two. We are planning with ATI, they will provide the head trainer and then Bill Fry will be serving as the assistant athletic trainer. So we will still have two athletic trainers next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on that with ATI?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the contract with ATI as presented in the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two board agenda packet.
Second.
A second by Mr. Welch. We have a roll call, please. Ms. Tardy?
Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkhan?
Yes.
Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Yes. Onto new business, payment of bills.
Kristen, you had some questions that were submitted on the bills.
Yes. The first question is covering board book page one twenty-seven and one thirty-three. There is a question on why we were paying two different companies for our electric. So one is for our supply and the other is for the delivery. We do the same thing for gas, too. That helps us get a cheaper rate for the supply. On board book page one twenty-eight, B and G X C C invite means Boys and Girls Cross Country Invite. On board book page one twenty-nine and one thirty-five, there's a question to explain the thirty thousand dollars to Fidelity Investments for annuity retirement payment and fifteen thousand to Lincoln Investment Planning. If you look under the account number to the right of the page, you'll see it says Retirement Stipend CBA BOE. That's referring to contract language in which teachers who retire receive two fifteen thousand dollar payments after they retire. And per the contract language, they can choose whether or not they would like to receive the money or they'd like the district to deposit it in a four or three B.
Kristen, back to the Boys and Girls Cross Country. Is that the invoice already for the upcoming fall season?
Yes.
Okay.
Board book page one twenty-nine, please explain Brookfield pool security. So we have an IGA with Brookfield for them to use our pool as well as one classroom during the summer for their summer camp. And on certain days when they're in the classroom the whole day, we provide security for that as well as the pool usage. In turn, with our IGA, they maintain alert field for our baseball use and occasional soccer use.
And the six point two five is the number of hours that the security is working?
I believe so, yes.
That's okay. I didn't add that to the question.
It's twenty, they, they receive twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Okay.
So it could be for multiple days, too. And then there was another question submitted in regards to when the screen will be installed in two oh one that was approved in April of twenty twenty-two. Unfortunately, some of the things are on backorder due to supply chain issues, but it should be installed this month and be here for the August board meeting.
Kick off the year in style.
Twenty twenty-two.
We ordered that name.
And those are all the questions that were submitted.
The Board of?
Thank you.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two board agenda packet.
Second.
A second by Mr. Welch. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkhan?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Salem?
Yes. Disposal of surplus personal property. Is this a first read?
It is, it is not. Typically, we approve it the same night. However, there's no rush. The disposal process occurs twice a year, in July and December. I've included a list of surplus AV equipment, computer equipment, athletic and building equipment. The equipment's either old or needs repair beyond what is cost-effective. And whenever possible, the district tries to sell, recycle or donate the equipment. And there was no question submitted in regards to this.
So where possible, will you recycle it for money?
Whenever possible, yes. Like, right now, the refrigerator, it was, it didn't make sense to spend the money to repair it when you can buy new ones. We've been using parts from that to replace, to fix other refrigerators that we currently have.
So there were no questions on this. Can we move forward?
Sure. Whereas the superintendent has recommended, the Board of Education has, has determined that certain surplus personal property listed in the attached exhibit one, surplus personal property, belonging to the district is no longer needed for school purposes and should be sold. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that the sale of the surplus personal property in accordance with section ten dash twenty-two point eight, one oh five Illinois CS five slash ten dash twenty-two point eight, at a public or private sale is in the best interest of the district. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside Brookfield High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois as follows. Section one, that the superintendent is hereby authorized to dispose of the surplus personal property by private or public sale in a manner which is in the best interest of the district. Section two, in the event that any such property remains unsold, the superintendent may dispose of it in a manner which is in the best interest of the school district. Section three, the superintendent shall report to the board the items sold, the buyer and the amount received for each item.
Second.
A second, and we do need a roll call for that, please.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkhan?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Benhor?
Yes.
And Ms. Salem?
Yes. So Dr. Skinkis referenced the press plus policy updates in his remarks. Do we want to have any discussion on those tonight? Do you want to talk about them? I told them for next month.
I have nothing to discuss at this point. And you, only one board member presidency has just had one comment on policy five point two hundred and I'll include that in my discussion with my advisory council for August.
Okay. So I think we can move on to registration fees. I did not see a recommendation in here.
There's not a recommendation. It's just something I wanted to discuss with the board as we are preparing for the registration starting tomorrow. Kristen and I, you know, based on how the school year finished, is there something that the board would like to do? Whether it's, we, we looked at two things, whether we look at pay to participate or if we look at just the general registration fee or the tech fee to possibly lower it twenty-five dollars or, you know, ten percent just to provide families some break. You know, the other, or the other thing is we, we, we hold firm on the fees, but maybe make a commitment to hold firm on the fees for two years so that there's no increases. You know, we're just, we, I just wanted to bring this up as we start the registration process for us to think about it. We don't have to do something tonight, so there is no recommendation. That's something we should think about. We could always provide a credit back to families that go through registration if we needed to.
To give the board some context, if we were to reduce the registration fee by twenty-five dollars, it would be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars for the district. If we were to lower the pay to participate cap, which is currently at three fifty per student to three hundred, it would be about fifteen thousand dollars as we have around three hundred students that reached the cap last year that were not on free lunch.
Wait, the month, the amount you're giving that would be?
Revenue the district would lose.
Right, that's, okay.
And that's with a twenty-five dollar reduction? I'm sorry.
Yeah, can you say, can you repeat that, please?
So if we reduce registration fees by twenty-five dollars, it would be around thirty-five thousand dollars for the district. Pay to participate, if we lowered the cap, which is currently at three fifty to three hundred, would be about fifteen thousand dollars to the district. And this is for students that are on free or reduced?
It's for all. That would be for all.
For everyone.
Students that are on free or reduced lunch already don't have to pay the fees.
Got it.
But we know that we already have inflation. Everything is more expensive. And so by keeping prices just constant, that already is a reduction.
That's a good point. It is.
Yeah, I, I just worry about reducing fees because eventually if you have to increase them again, the optics don't look good later down the road. I mean, I, I understand the possible relief for the here and now, but that also becomes a difficulty in the future. I would be more in favor of like committing to a hold personally.
Do we have any sense that reducing the participation fee would increase participation?
That was, that was one of the things I did think about bringing up. So like, right now, it's two hundred for your first port, or it's two hundred, one fifty, and then if the kid, a student plays another activity, it's a three hundred dollar cap, correct?
It's currently three fifty.
It's currently a three fifty cap. So.
It would only benefit those students.
That are playing more.
That are playing multiple sports.
Their third sport.
Third sport or sports and activities.
So it wouldn't delete the fee for a student playing one sport?
And then it wouldn't be universal.
But it would reduce it for two, from three fifty to three hundred, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So it would, it would only impact the percentage of our employees, of our, of our students who play in an activity versus the other which is a universal?
Well, and that's my question, would it increase participation in which case I'm all in favor of using that carrot to?
But I think we, there are plenty of options, are plenty of students who seek a waiver for those fees already. There is a process in place for, for waivers for participation. So if, if that cost is an impediment, there already is an outlet for, for that process.
Well, and we also just got, you, you just approved a new contract with increases for, you know, athletics and stipends. So I don't think without seeing an analysis to reduce pay to play with an increase that was just approved. We don't know what that impact would be.
I think we had a.
It doesn't change the number of coaches.
No, but they're gonna, the stipends was increased. So now we'll be spending more to run the same sports.
And clubs.
Okay.
And clubs. So we're gonna pay more to have the same numbers for the clubs.
It was just a discussion. I didn't have the board start. As you can see, there's no recommendation.
You just approved that.
You know, it may, it may be better off to have, you know, I know as Ms. Towner recommended there. And Kristen and I discussed it, right? If you give a break for one year and then all of a sudden costs go up or, you know, then we're raising the fees back up.
I mean, so, so in my opinion, I, I like the hold harmless approach for, for a two-year cap. I think that's probably the most broadly impactful, you know, a twenty-five dollar reduction out of registration fees that are really quite steep. Once you're finished with registration is not, it doesn't always necessarily ring a bell. So I'd be in favor of maintaining fees if that's something that the administration could do some analysis on and if that's.
Yep.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple of thoughts about that and maybe the path to go down, but I think we're not quite willing to make a decision.
And we're, and we're discussing potentially changing fees. We're gonna start to collect tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, yes, I mean.
But not for this year.
Yeah. It would be for this year.
No, we would just reduce and we would, so like, when, if those families that register tomorrow, if the board approves this in August, we'd just provide a credit. Cause they don't pay the pay to participate until the season or they don't sometimes buy classroom supplies till the season, so.
How many students would we have registered by the next board meeting?
Hopefully, everyone.
Well, that would be everyone.
That would be everyone, hopefully.
Okay, so what would be the impact on the business office?
That's a good question.
To issue six, thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred, twenty-five dollar refunds per registered, registered student? You don't have to answer that, but that would be the impact internally of the work. And I would lean towards holding steady at the moment.
I mean, I think it's a good thought process and I appreciate the administration thinking through, what can we do to provide some relief? I just think we, we may need a more firm recommendation.
Yeah, I'm really concerned. I mean, we approved a new contract with increases. Inflation is going up. We know we're not gonna get our tax dollars to possibly January. On three fronts, we see increases. I think anybody now, we should just be holding steady. And I wouldn't even be making two-year promises because we don't know how long this recession we're in now is even gonna hold.
We're not.
Not there yet, but it could be coming.
Yeah.
So I think just.
I think that's why we wrote it as general as possible, just so that.
I think it's a good discussion.
The taxpayers can see that we are considering that, we are aware of this, we're, we're thinking of what's going on and we're trying to, but wanna make sure we operate, you know, fiscally responsible as well.
So could you remind the board, when would you be coming back with recommendations for registration fees for twenty-three, twenty-four?
March.
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 So we would have some, a clearer picture.
Yes.
So we can table this tomorrow.
And, and.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if someone feels very strongly about it, we can always bring it up for another discussion, but I think, I appreciate you guys bringing it up.
And understand the timing of this. We don't get our June thirty financials until like July sixth, July seventh. So we don't know how the fiscal year really finishes until about three or four days before this meeting. And also, that's why we didn't want to start having this discussion with you in, in May because we're not sure where we were gonna, you know, and we had an idea, but we were trying to put some things on that fiscal year or two. So that's why the timing is kind of playing out like it is.
But we wrote one big check earlier in the meeting, right? We wrote, we wrote a check to.
Aramark.
Aramark for one point three. So one point three went out the door tonight in one check.
Yeah.
Right.
And what came in from property taxes today?
Zero.
Zero.
That was a, that was a rhetorical. I was seeing Dr. Spatana, I was paying attention. Are we ready to move on? Is everyone comfortable moving on at this point? Renewal of the e-learning plan.
This is a formality. The board approved this three years ago. Every three years, you need to reapprove your e-learning plan. So it's on file with the Regional Office of Education. We used this last year for the one or two snow days. We had, the e-learning plan is, is very successful in regards to, you know, all the work that we had during COVID. So. So no questions were submitted on this, and again, this is more of a formality.
Right. E-learning though is, the e-learning plan is different from our remote learning plan.
Correct, but we use a very similar schedule where teachers are now interacting. When we first submitted this e-learning plan, it was like, check in with your teacher, you got your assignments in email, you turned them in in Google Docs. Then COVID hit, and based on all the stuff we've learned, and we pay for the district-wide Zoom account, we now require teachers to do synchronous instruction on e-learning days.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the renewal of the e-learning plan for the district as presented in the July 12, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
You have a second from Mr. Welch. Would you need a roll call, please, Ms. Nard?
Mr. Durkhan?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Struska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Horr?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Yes. Final item is the first read of security camera system. Dr. Skinkis?
Yes, Ms. Matana, Dr. Matana, you got a few questions submitted on this, you want to provide some of the background?
Sure, I would stress that this is a first read. So our current security camera system, a lot of the cameras are out of date and needs to be updated, as well as the server. The system is running on a seven-year-old server, which runs on Windows 7. We're currently on Windows 11, to give people some context, so it's an unsupported operating system. A majority of the 64 cameras are over seven years old, with some that have been in service over 15 years. There are 20, of those 64, there are 22 analog cameras that absolutely have to be replaced because they're not compatible with any new system. Over the last 10 years, the district's been completing piecemeal updates, and the recommendation of the administration is to take advantage of the new technology, and we're recommending to purchase all-new cameras and a new operating system. We're recommending to switch to a cloud-based system that will provide benefits such as an improved system interface for searching video. For example, you could put in search terms to search anybody wearing a red shirt, and that would pop up. Whereas right now, we spend hours combing over videos. There are higher-resolution cameras. Imagine watching a TV that's 15 years old, right? Like, the pixelation would be bad. Our outside cameras that are analog, it's very difficult, it's very difficult to read the license plates that go through, and this would obviously solve that problem. There'd be cloud backup storage, and then also the ability to view camera footage from an off-site location. So should something happen over the weekend, Dave Mannan could be sitting at home and pull up the camera feed and take a look at what was going on. This does not need to go out to bid, and so we did receive three quotes, which I've provided for you. The quotes include all-new cameras, a new cloud-based server, installation of all of the equipment, in addition to the five-year cloud-based license. We would recommend purchasing the security camera system from Skynet Security. Not only do they have the lowest price, but they're a trusted vendor that we've used over the past 10 years for various projects. There was a question submitted about whether this could be performed over a two-year span, and the answer technically is yes, but we would have to buy a server for the old cameras to talk to that server, and then have that server talk to the cloud, which would be about $7,000. We would also have to spend additional money on labor as well to have them come back out and do the second set of installation.
So it's not cost-effective?
Correct.
To go over two years.
And I think those were all of the questions that were submitted.
What bucket does this money come out of?
This would come out of technology.
This comes out of techno, and hottest technology, they, they get their monies through student fees, and we make, they make a budget, right? But this is not something that we put money in their budget every year for, right?
Correct. This is currently not in the budget.
This is not in the budget.
But in the tentative budget, we currently are projecting a surplus of roughly around $500,000. I think that will decrease as I tighten some things up, but we do have the room in next year's budget to purchase this.
So we'd be able to pay for this because we are fortunate enough to have a surplus, but it is a cost that is new to us right now.
Correct.
Correct.
So let's remember that when we're thinking about refunds.
Good point.
Well, and my only other comment would be that I think this is a great use of technology money, right? These, this is the way the world operates.
Right, we would not be paying, this is, let's just be clear, though, this is not, student fees aren't covering this budget item. This is a separate budget item, we will put in the budget from our operating funds.
The operating budget item, that's a technology department.
Student fees for technology cover their Chromebooks, and they cover...
Printers, the Wi-Fi stations, and all that.
Systems, like software programs that we need, that the students utilize.
Yeah, I would just love to, like, to continue to see this as part of an ongoing budget, right, so that we kind of don't end up in this same boat where it's like, oh, it's gone on way too long, and we need to revamp the whole system. If we can kind of stay ahead of the curve, right, or with the curve, because technology changes so fast, right, then it would be better.
Some of the things that you're, that I'm experiencing this year, and this being one of them, is a lot of things were touched during the renovation, and those things are starting to break or need to be updated, and this is one of them.
Dr. Matana, that was my question. What's the, what are we looking at for the install?
Oh, that's all, that's all included in the $140,000. It includes...
No, I'm saying is that the board is, if the board is reading this tonight, first read, and wants more time to think about it, if we approve this in August, are we looking at using the old system through first semester, and then having them installed during winter break when no one's in the building?
Likely, yes. The first step would be ordering the cameras and getting the cameras in. Once the cameras came in, then we would be able to install them.
So we're fully functional and operational with our current system, because again, this will take a few months to get this ordered, installed, and implemented.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure, so that we have coverage that the board and the community knows that we still have our current camera system in place.
That's correct.
Okay.
My question was regarding infrastructural, which is involved there, versus operational, and you don't have to answer this now because it was first read, but what is, what was, and feel free not to answer this now, but what is the operational year-to-year cost on that, so?
So that's included for the five years in the $140,000. After that, it would be around $7,500 a year to maintain the cloud-based system and the cameras.
Okay.
Is that in our budget now?
That is something that would be, be able to be absorbed in the technology budget. It is not in the budget now, but the five-year cost for that is approximately like $35,000 roughly, and every five years, we've been needing to replace the server, which also costs about that money, about that much.
So currently, they're housing a server that's on a cloud.
Correct.
Correct.
The subscription's on a cloud-based function for $75,000.
Correct. Where every five years, you're buying a new server for $35,000 to $45,000.
So, so this is new money that we have to, I mean, we're never not going to have security cameras, you know, and as Ramona points out, we need to be cognizant of it. This is new money that we're going to have to intentionally put aside every year so that we can make these replacements.
No, it's not new money.
No, not for the first five years.
In upkeep right now, on an old system, at a less, less effective state, because we're talking about lower technology that doesn't have the ability to look up a red shirt.
Right, but I mean, we're going to spend $140,000, but then for going forward, we're going to spend $5,000 to $7,000 a year to run it.
In year six, in year six.
And in five years again.
At year six.
Yes, and then in year five, we may need more technology.
No.
No, I think we're going to be, I mean, we're going to be all digital, we'll be cloud-based. I would think as you start working through, once the warranty expires, you just start looking at replacing individual cameras that maybe break or malfunction. But you shouldn't have to do a full-grade, a full-grade upgrade to the system.
We're still going to have to commit monies towards this that we've not in the past.
You should have an agent obsolescence plan for this going forward.
We've, I will say, we've always dedicated some money to cameras in the past. We've had cameras break, we're routinely placing, replacing cameras whenever possible.
And that's stated in the...
But just due to the number of analog cameras and the fact that we want to update to a cloud base, that's why we're making this recommendation. But we always, in the normal technology budget, are able to buy a couple of new cameras every year, replace them out, that sort of thing.
And part of the rationale is the continued cost to maintain an obsolete system, an effectively obsolete system.
Right.
So putting this money in there is saving us as much as you're claiming, as I'm hearing, the claim that it's going to cost us.
No, what I'm saying is that this is money that we will be spending, and we need to be cognizant of it.
I'm hearing that.
I'm not denying that we need to spend it.
I don't think you're objecting it either.
Yeah, I'm not objecting, I'm not denying it. I'm just saying that as we start to think about, should we be giving refunds or what we're doing with our money, I'm just saying, here's a new day. Here's something new that we are going to be moving forward and thinking about moving forward, and we should have money to do that. Because I can't imagine us not having a system anymore.
So this was a first read. Are there, if there are any more additional, Mr. Welch?
If it's appropriate, I'd ask the president to get information from the administration, and if we install this improved system, who outside our building would we allow access to, and what in our policy covers whatever this system can do, like searching for red shirts or...
Currently, we have an IGA, or we have an agreement with the Riverside Police Department. All their squads have access to our cameras, so if there was ever a rapid deployment situation or incident inside the school, they could access it from their squad cars as they're coming into the building.
Yeah, and bring that to us when we, on the second read.
Okay.
And where it is in our policy that we allow that.
Right. I don't think it's in a policy, I believe it's in an IGA that we have, that the board approved a long time ago.
And is this an open-ended IGA?
I need to...
Bring that to us and let us know, just so... And then is there, is there any other privacy concerns that there might be out there? Most likely not, since the school is probably a place where that doesn't exist, but we could always ask our attorney that.
I mean, could it ever happen that the Riverside Police see an incident and warrant a ticket?
No, I think there's a specifics in the, that it's an order for only when there's a call. There's specifics, I don't want to speak to that, but there are specifics because the board vetted that, and we gave them permission, so...
So again, if the president thinks it's appropriate to have the administration...
I think it would be helpful to see the IGA. It's not an IGA I previously looked at, so I think I'm seeing nods around the table if we could have that included with some, if this is, if our current cameras are, what, 10 years old, it's probably time to look at the full package and how they're deployed and utilized. That makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
And I want to make sure to board, I don't know if it's an IGA or it's a...
Whatever it is.
A memorandum, an executive order, like for the chief, with his different patrols or whatever.
No, I think, I think it's probably timely to review. It's a good idea. And if there's any other information, I think we could submit them as questions. Clearly, a lot of dialogue on this particular item, but it was a first read. Okay, thank you. Visitor statements? We don't have anyone?
Yeah, I want to come up with a guess, especially after what you said about being fiscally responsible, though I feel silly, but... Did he absorb 30 seconds of...
Yes, when I, when I give you the wave, Mr. Welch, you got 30 seconds.
All right. You got 30 seconds?
You can go.
I know, it's 3 minutes.
You got 3 minutes.
So I just wanted to tell you, first of all, you guys, I appreciate your service to the community. Often, it's very thankless, and I'm sure you'd rather be doing something other than be here on a July night that's so beautiful. So, in closing, and this is, I feel silly after we're talking about fiscal responsibility and student fees, but the one thing that I wanted, I wanted to say, ran out of time, was, and maybe there's something already in place, but, and also, I'm the type of person that I've heard from lots of students over the years, saying there's too many kids taking AP classes. That being said, that's something that would be uplifting and challenging, that, I understand that freshmen do not take AP classes, and I would love to see some sort of pilot program or some sort of initiative, and maybe there's already one, where if, where teachers here at the school see a freshman, see their potential, see that they're gifted or super smart or have a great memory, and that they could make a, an official recommendation for them to take AP classes, because in some homes, AP, what's that mean? You know, advanced placement's down the tip of everybody's tongue. That, that it, there'd be a pilot program to encourage kids that have potential, and really kind of like bestowed on them, "We think you, your teacher said, recommend it," and then come before the school board, if it's five students or 10 students worthy of it, of, of saying, "We think you should take AP classes," and the school's willing to cover those costs. And I just thought that would be something that if we're looking to, you know, to encourage kids to strive, to achieve, to, you know, to be number one in the class, or, you know, or for whatever they do, because most kids don't know about life, don't know what they're going to be doing, and sometimes they need a kick in the pants, and that could be from their parents, it could be from a teacher, or it could be something wonderful that came from the school board. And that was one thing I thought about as far as, you know, because there's been talk here in the community, also I've seen this nationwide, where people talk about the fact that some parents just say, "Ah, boy, AP classes, that's an expense I don't want, I don't want to do." And I thought that maybe if there was something, Dr. Fitas, I'm sure that's something that we could talk about in the future, but I would love to see something like that, where, where kids were actually, and it was looked upon like a golden ticket, or something like, that was an honor. And it doesn't have to be publicized, but it's something that internally that a kid could take, who maybe would not take the courses that they would want to take, or think that they're capable of taking, and I just wanted to toss it out there. And also, if I have one minute left, anecdotal story, sorry.
22 seconds.
Two seconds?
22.
22.
See, I take you for your word every time. Anyway, when you were talking about the lifetime of services, like roofs and air conditioning and, and facilities, the backstory is, the football field went from green grass to artificial turf in 2009 or 2010 at great expense. And what was unbeknownst to the board and to the community around the school was that several basements started to flood, and nobody connected it to the football field. Then, the football field, which was supposed to have an average lifetime of 10 years, eight to 10 years, ended up being pulled up in three or four years later. And then when they pulled up the field, I don't know if it was the old contractor or the new contractor, they said, "Oh, look, your drainage was not correct, and that's what caused..." And then, of course, I put two and two together, saying, "This is what, and then when you replaced the field, the, the consequences of the neighbors went away." Now, my question is, is that if we have this average life expectancy of a product or service to the school, is that, like, for example, with the football field, and maybe, and we're past the statute of limitations, was the original contractor ever held accountable for the fact that they, they didn't use the proper drainage of the larger rocks, smaller rocks, that they're supposed to do when graduated? It turns out they just dumped in a bunch of big rocks, and then what happened was it rushed through too quickly, overdid the sewers, and on Parkview...
It's your turn.
Parkview and Ridge, Ridgewood, and around here, numerous houses had flooding, and then all of a sudden, it disappeared. So just food for thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for staying for the meeting. We appreciate that.
You should stick around a few minutes, I could talk to you about that.
You got it.
All right.
We did not have any discussion items requested for later in the meeting. Do we have any items for consideration at future meetings? Anyone? Okay, looking around. Moving on to matters for closed session, we will have appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee under the following penalty: student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, school safety, confidentiality of closed session minutes, and the superintendent's contract and yearly goals 22 to 23. Ms. Towner could agree to it.
Yeah, the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the July 12, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Welch. Give her a roll call, please.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Struska?
Yes.